Okay, thank you for being here tonight.
That's funny.
Before our meeting formally begins, we'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Poole, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we've had a good run in Sandusky for the last two years with your, through your guidance and help. It appears at this point that our brethren in Carolinas could use a little, little of your attention. So I think we can handle this meeting tonight on our own, based on what you've done for us in the past, guided us in the past, in our Lord's name, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Mr. Crosser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Commissioners, have you, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of August 27, 2018. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'm going to accept the minutes of the August 27 meeting in Spencer's.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. No objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn now to audience participation. Anyone present wishing to address any of our regular agenda items, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts or concerns. And as usual, those will be addressed during the
Sharon Johnson, 11:30.
Just one second, please, Ms. Johnson. Those will be addressed during the course of the meeting, as those particular pieces of legislation come up. And a note, we are pulling items two and, I'm sorry, three and four from the agenda. A number of commissioners had a couple of questions about those, and we couldn't get the documentation that we were looking for as quickly as we needed for this meeting. So those will be taken up another time. Ms. Johnson, please.
Okay, so you took off my item four, I was gonna talk, my item three that I was gonna talk about, can I still say a few words?
Sure. We weren't trying to pull the rug out from underneath you, we're just trying to do an
Okay, might be able to change your mind. The item three here, new city hall emergency generator and automatic doors, costing $108,897. I'd like to know, I can understand the emergency generator for the backup of our IT equipment and everything, but the handicapped automatic doors, I would think that the property owner renovating that building would have to pay for the doors. He needs to have handicapped doors on his building. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner.
Ms. Whoopsir.
Commissioner President Murray, I apologize for the interruption. I actually think we were just supposed to pull three, which had both the generator and the doors. I don't think we actually did it to pull four. I thought, I was confused as to whether that was a two-part piece of legislation. But I think, so just three is the only one that necessarily needs to be pulled.
Yes, my mistake, I was thinking it was two different pieces of legislation.
I was actually doing the same thing, so I apologize.
Okay, thank you for correcting that. And there's no reason to apologize to interrupt or to speak during the meeting. As you know, per the charter, you have the absolute unqualified right to speak during the course of the meeting.
Thank you.
I may say, wait a minute, but yeah, so no need to apologize.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission on any of our regular agenda items, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, Staff, Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. My questions pertained also to item number three, so if someone could write this down maybe for the next meeting when it comes back to the table, that'd be great. The question I had was the generator that we're speaking of for, I believe, $93,000. My question would be, is that going to function only for the city hall portion of this entire project, or is it going to function for the entire project, which includes the marketplace downstairs, commercial, I think there's supposed to be 20 apartments, so I'm curious whether or not this generator is just for our part of the project, or does it include the entire project? And if it includes the entire project, I don't know if the city should be responsible for the entire incuring of that cost. The other question is, again, as Ms. Sharon Johnson asked about, is the automatic doors, it's not quite clear whether or not these automatic doors are actually, once you get inside city hall, or is it actually the doors that you are approaching from the outside of the building? And again, the question would be, is if those are for the outside of the building, which gives me as a citizen access to the entire project, then again, should the city be incurring that cost 100%? So when you get, when you bring that back to the table, if maybe that could be answered, we'd appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schwanger. I do know the answer to your first question, which is that this just services our portion of the building, and it remains our property. If they want to have other backup support, then that's, that's up to them. Okay. Anyone else? If not, then we will turn to our regular items of business. Would someone care to make a motion to accept the communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. No objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Mrs. Crosser, before you present the consent agenda items, may I ask the commissioners if there are any items that they would like to have removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Then, Mrs. Crosser, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is the second reading for a contract with the Ashley Group for consulting and brokerage services for the city's health insurance program. Item B is an amendment to the Public Art and Culture Commission legislation to correct a Schreiner's error. Item C, authorization for the tax levies and a certification to the Erie County Auditor for the 2019 funding. And item D is for the maintenance of State Route Two within the Sandusky city limits to the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Commissioners, having heard the items on the consent agenda, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions A through D, as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda, shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions A through D, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Crosser, would you poll the commissioners first on the motion?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and the resolution, please.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now, on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine? Ms. Twine?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
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 Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That are out there, that they're still pursuing and trying to run down. And as we all know, Scott or Mackey, he is not going to stop until he makes sure that that funding is secured. He's very aggressive.
We really do have a good partner in him, yes. Thank you. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Item six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a second amendment to the professional services agreement, subgrant agreement with FOTH Infrastructure and Environment LLC of DePere, Wisconsin, for the Sandusky Bay Causeway Wetland Restoration Project Phase Two and the related Sandusky Bay Initiative, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
A motion, second. Discussion. This, of course, is the second piece of the two pieces that Mr. Klein just spoke to. The first, accepting the funding and then allowing the consultant, the engineer, to go ahead and form the work that we're already in our funding. Unless there are questions or comments, Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted, and that completes our regular items of business. And we turn the report over to Mr. Whoopsir for his city manager's report, I said, meeting, excuse me. I do want to note, before you begin your report, Mr. Whoopsir, that I and a couple of other Commissioners, like everyone was welcome, had an opportunity to take a look at the new future city hall space last week. And it is, you know, there's a certain, there's an article in the front page newspaper today about the delay in the project, not terribly big surprise. And as I met with the folks on site, I got a much better understanding of just exactly why that was happening. They did run into a number of situations that had not been anticipated. And to their great credit and to our savings, they went ahead and, as they should have, and that was, we were right to proceed with a lease and a fixed purchase price at the end, because they did encounter some things, and they did have to spend more money that was anticipated, but they did it right. And the problem is that when you're working with historic tax credits, the Office of Historic Preservation rightly wants to make sure that as much of that old building is preserved as possible. So they found some situations that weren't anticipated, they stopped, they engineered a better way to deal with it, but then they had to wait for approval, and that can take a while. And that's not to the discredit of the developer, it's not to the discredit of the State Office for Historic Preservation, it's just the way it is sometimes. So I know you're going to address that, but I wanted to mention that I didn't have that opportunity, and I was, once I saw it and talked it through, I understood.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner President Murray. Thank you, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I will start my remarks this evening with the donations. The Division of Facilities and Properties has received donations from a few of the vendors that participate in Drive-Thru Drop-Off Day to help with the purchase of two new banners to promote this biannual event. A hundred dollar donation from Barnes Nursery, a sixty dollar donation from Cyclone Services, and a hundred dollar donation from Goodwill Industries. I'd ask for a motion to accept those donations.
So move.
Second.
A motion, second. Discussion. No objection, the motion should be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to those three partners in beautifying Sandusky.
Thank you. Moving on to police and fire. Tofts Dairy and Ice Cream will be hosting the annual Sub-Zero with a Hero event on September 11th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The Sandusky Police Department and Fire Department will join together for this family-friendly event. Again, that's September 11th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Tofts Dairy and Ice Cream on Venice Road. Also, the Fire Department will begin flow testing, and residents are encouraged to run their water faucets if there is discolored water from a result of agitated sediment in lines. Moving on to finance, the next scheduled Finance Committee meeting is this Friday, September 14th at 7:45 a.m. in the Commission Chambers. Again, that's this Friday, September 14th at 7:45 a.m. in the Commission Chambers for Public Works. On Friday, 9/7, one of the two plastic hypochlorite tanks at Big Island Water Works experienced an elastic deformation and crack near the bottom. The interior bladder is currently holding, and straps have placed around the tank to produce potential catastroph, ah, sorry, and straps have been placed around the tank to reduce the potential for catastrophic failure of the tank wall. Material is being pumped to the other tank throughout the treatment process while staff is obtaining pricing for an emergency replacement. We're looking for a motion this evening to approve the emergency repair, since costs may be around a hundred thousand. The appropriate legislation would be requested once final costs are known. So I'd ask the Commission for a motion to approve those emergency repairs pending legislation.
So move.
Second.
Motion, and second. Discussion. Mr. Klein, this is a very large amount. Perhaps you could just address that a little bit, but this sounds like a really dangerous situation that we really have to address as quickly as possible. We're talking about enormous amounts of chlorine that are in these tanks?
Yes. Yes, Mr. President. The water plant obviously feeds chemicals into the raw water system, and one of those chemicals is a, basically a chlorine type of a chemical called hypochlorite. The tanks that were installed in the late 2000s, we unfortunately don't have a good means by which to remove those tanks from the building when they reach their useful life. Useful life on those is probably eight to 12 years, somewhere in that range. So this one, the tank that expanded, if you see the pictures, there's a big bulge on the side of the tank and a crack on the side of it as well. Fortunately, there's a bladder on the inside that holds the water, and that is still holding. Staff has put that strap around it to make sure that there's, that we can do everything we can while we're procuring an additional tank. Unfortunately, it takes quite a bit of time to get a new tank of that size and to open the hole in the wall to get the new tank in, and then fix that wall and put a door in so we don't have to do that again next time. So unfortunately, it's not just replacing the tank, it's actually doing the work on the structure itself to get the tank in, the building in out, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Mr. Whoopsir?
Thank you. Also, just an update that the Huron and Lyons Park splash pads are now officially closed for the winter as of today, September 10th. We did extend the life of those past Labor Day for the particularly hot days last week, but with the cool weather, and I think, just wanted to be cautious, we'll close them down as of today. Also, construction of the Camel Street project, including resurfacing sidewalks, curbs, safety improvements, replacing sewers and upgrading water lines is officially complete and waiting for final change orders. A ribbon cutting ceremony is forthcoming, and we'd also like to welcome Scott Bittner, who has joined the Division of Streets and Traffic as a full-time maintenance, too. Scott was working as a seasonal employee in that division. Moving on to community development, I know Commissioner President Murray referenced this in the tour for the Commissioners late last week as it relates to our new offices. Based on our last construction meeting held between San City LLC, the property owner and developer, as well as the city, the new estimated completion date for the administrative offices is spring of next year. It is not uncommon for there to be delays with renovation projects, especially those involving tax credits, where any and all substantive changes must be approved and reviewed by the state and federal agencies. Since current city halls remain occupied with police and court functions until the completion of the new center, this change will have no negative impact on our operations or services or costs as far as staying. So city staff will be present, city staff will present to Commission for consideration a lease amendment proposal regarding alterations to the occupancy date in the upcoming weeks. But again, I think Commissioner President Murray said it very well, and we do see progress, and we're excited to get in there as soon as possible. Moving on to the planning department, the Lang Trust has graciously sponsored a year-long temporary sculpture on loan program in partnership with the Midwest Sculpture Initiative in the city of Sandusky. The Lang Trust has worked with the Sandusky Public Arts and Culture Commission and the Midwest Sculpture Initiative to select eight sites throughout the Kilborn Plant area. These sites will host sculptures temporarily for one year. These sculptures are scheduled to be selected by a committee formed by the Lang Trust within the next week. In fact, I think they met and did some selections today, and Robin from the Arts and Culture Commission is here tonight. Installation is scheduled to occur by the end of September. For more information on the Midwest Sculpture Initiative, you can look to www.msisculpture.com. That's a mouthful, but, okay. Also, Commissioner Waddington and Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator Talon Flor will be conducting neighborhood update meetings starting in October and going through March. The meetings will review projects and progress within each of the six Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative areas. Meeting dates, times, and locations are in the process of being set, and we'll be communicating with the public once finalized. That we are now one year into the Neighborhood Initiative and are also doing an event at the Rotary Club in October, where we'll kind of show a year in review of how far we've come and what we expect to accomplish over the course of the next year. Also, the regular planning commission meeting is scheduled Wednesday, September 26 at 11:30 p.m. in the Commission Chambers. That's Wednesday, September 26 in these Commission Chambers. And I also want to introduce tonight, we have the newest member, Planner Tom Horseman, who has joined us. He relocated to Sandusky without any connections to the area from Cleveland, having most recently been working at Cleveland State University. He has a master's degree in urban planning from Cleveland State University, and undergraduate degree in political science, I believe, from Catholic University in Washington, D.C. Tom came across in the interviews that Angie conducted as a very thoughtful person that I think will add a lot of great value to the department. So Tom, welcome aboard. Moving on to recreation, Friends of the Greenhouse will be applying for a grant to bring back a giant checkerboard that was located in Washington Park in the 30s and 40s. The Friends of the Sandusky Greenhouse and the City of Sandusky Rec Department would like to bring back the checkerboard during the bicentennial to pay homage to the history of Washington Park. The specific area being proposed for construction of the checkerboard is difficult to grow grass, and therefore, this project would also enhance the park landscape. The game pieces would be stored in a nearby building to be used during public events, and we'd have both chess and checkers pieces. Without grant funding, bringing back historic attraction and creating an interactive activity in Washington Park, it would not be possible. If funded, this donation will be placed back on a future city manager's report for the city commission to accept. And people have really loved the giant Jenga that was done, or the battleship of Lake Erie Board Game, and so this kind of continues that sort of Back to the Future movement and giving people larger-than-life activities in the park. Also, peer pressure will take place this Saturday with Next Level Fit Academy at 8:00 a.m. This free Saturday morning workout will take place at Shade Mylander Plaza. A downtown gym crawl is also being organized for the last peer pressure of the season. It will take place on September 29th. Also, Dragons and Bacon Fest is this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. with more teams for 2018. The event is a partnership between Sandusky Rock, Lake Erie Shores and Islands, Adaptive Adventures, and the Encore Shop is the title sponsor of this year's event. The public is welcome to watch from the Paper District Marina or Jackson Street Pier. Food trucks with a bacon focus will be available throughout the day, and I know that folks had a lot of fun participating last year. I hope that we get good weather for this weekend. And then finally, the Sandusky Bicentennial Commission kicked off the Beard Centennial Contest last week. The contest is an homage to a similar contest during the city's Sesquicentennial in 1968. One added feature to this contest is the end-of-year growth category, where contestants take a before picture with a print version of the Sandusky Register and grow their beard until the contest finale on November 23rd at the Sandusky State Theater. Categories include best beard, longest beard, best mustache, worst facial hair, and crowd favorite. I am now four days into the competition. I think the only one that I'll be actually eligible for is worst facial hair.
If I decide to stick with it, yeah, I'm thinking about letting it go. Well, we'll see if I make it till November 23rd, but, yeah, but I think a lot of people are rooting for me to drop out. But people are having a lot of fun. There's actually a lot of participants sending their pictures in on social media, so it's been a good partnership with the Register and for the Bicentennial Commission.
So with that, I conclude my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Whoopsir. Commissioners, questions or comments for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
Orlando Pace Park, we're going to get the padding for the basketball hoops?
Through Commissioner, President Murray to Commissioner Waddington, I talked to Aaron and Todd today, and they're investigating different treatments, but we are looking at it, so.
Because the park looks great, but that was a concern. I've stopped out a few times and running into the, that's a big hunk of steel that you run into, so some type of padding of any kind of, we can get on there.
You've had them on there in the past, and they just deteriorated and they're gone?
No, no, no. We just knew it's, you know, it's metal bolts, but we need padding because the kids are running into it. Then I brought a follow-up thing.
Mr. Waddington?
Could we do the pathway one more time, like make it sweep through? Because like for the kayakers, it's really got dense as far as grass and weeds and that right through there.
Through that, so through the Commission President to Commissioner Waddington, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying.
For the rowing club and all that is down the path?
Oh, that area, yeah.
Because I was down there again yesterday and walked through, wow, it's, you know, it's really, I used to try to tackle it, you know, for times.
Aaron and I will get together tomorrow morning and see if we can get somebody up there.
Just one last time for a winner.
No, I understand.
Mr. Chairman, just two things. First thing, Mr. Waddington's comment about, what was that about with the backstop padding?
At Orlando Pace, you know, the full court?
Orlando Pace, I just didn't know what you were talking about.
Right, right, right.
Do we have to do this at all basketball courts, padding?
Yeah, padding for, so the kids don't run into it.
I mean, are you, is it just Orlando Pace, or are we going to take care of all the basketball courts?
Well, I stopped there because I had a call.
You're suggesting?
Yeah, yeah.
Chairman, may I suggest that we look, if it's a problem, that we look at the entire city?
I would think it's inexpensive, and I would think that that would be recommended. I'd like to hear the records, thoughts about that.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine, just a matter. Places where little kids are playing probably is not an issue because they're not, and we haven't had a problem, but the idea is we should at least take a look at it. The other question deals with this arts council. The cons, what locations are we putting these at? Is it, are they public or private? That's the first part.
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole, the city's planning staff, as well as members of the Arts and Culture Commission, met with the Lang Trust to select locations. I know they put out there, I want to say a start of 24 locations. The nonprofit recommends that they're all within sort of a mile radius, so they could be walked. And I think what they were trying to do was thread together eight locations that would connect potentially the sort of Masonic parks of the city. If you think about like East Park, West Park, Huron Park, Central Park, the areas kind of along Central and Huron, as well as a few waterfront locations. I know they narrowed down that list dramatically and are focused on a few of those locations, but that's the area in general that they thought would make the most sense, but they are public property.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't have an opinion and certainly don't want to weigh in on where you put these or how it's determined, but from listening to your conversation, it seems to me, I didn't hear where the commission comes involved here. It sounded like the Lang Trust and a subcommittee is going to dictate where we put things on public property, and it's going past this commission. I would suggest a couple of things, and this is open for discussion. One, if you're putting it on public property, it should be approved here as a matter of process only. It'll be passed through. And number two, if they're putting, using city dollars to paint something on a private building even at that, it also needs to come through here, especially if it's more than $10,000.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, and I didn't hear that, and I just want to be, and somebody can correct me if that's an inappropriate approach to take to this.
Well, Mr. Poole, I would say there's nothing inappropriate about it, although I don't think I really want to get involved in the question of where particular pieces are placed. I tell you that when it comes to public art, if you put 10 people in a room, you'll probably have close to 100 opinions about where it should go and what should go where. That's just the nature of public art, it's designed to cause some discussion. But, you know, I don't know, the Lang Trust is the one that's funding it. It's on city property. I don't feel a need to be personally involved, but maybe we should ask one of the city commissioners to be involved. I don't know how many members of the Arts Commission are involved. Seems it makes sense that there'd be members of the Arts Commission involved in the process.
Absolutely. And through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole, the current initiative of Lang Trust was brought to the city by Lang Trust and then kind of vetted to the new Arts and Culture Commission as part of that. That would involve the former part of your question, which is the public property piece, and we will look at what is the most appropriate process for that. I don't have any issue with at all saying, hey, this is, I think it'll be mostly public property. I think there's one or two spaces that could be asking private property to allow sculptures visible to the public to sit there. There would not be any murals as part of that piece, but I think your point is well taken, and I can assure you that no project that the public, that is funded by the public art dollars or public dollars will go forward without being vetted at least first by the Arts and Culture Commission, and certainly anything that would rise to the level of needing legislation from the city commission, we wouldn't be looking to circumvent that process, and we'll take that very seriously and come back. And we absolutely hope you guys can come to some of the meetings and give feedback along the way as well, because we want to make sure that there's a lot of public process and input into what happens. But the Lang Trust piece in particular, I'll have to work with planning to see if we need any type of legislation specifically for where they go, but we certainly value the input and feedback of the city commission in that process.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
Just a moment to address just your statement, what you said, because what the manager addressed is essentially how things are supposed to work. The, I'm not interested in personally dictating or even caring where you put this art. If you're using city property, the taxpayers have, should have an opportunity to say something about it, and that is through us. And just like giving easements or any other use of city property, we have to say, yes, that's okay, and that's all I'm addressing. It needs to come through here, and I probably will have no comment about it, but we do have to make a motion that says you may put this piece of art on this piece of public property, just as we do with the veterans monuments and anything else. And so if you, if I'm missing something, bring me in line, but it seems to me that that's what, if you're going to put something out there on city property, taxpayers are allowed to know about it in advance, perhaps a presentation from the Arts Committee telling us what they're going to do. And I realize for 100 a week, I'm asking a lot, but I think that's a process that long-term is best for the community. The Lang Trust deciding where we're going to put, what we're going to put any place should be vetted through the process that we do for anything else you use the city property, whether it's a lease or whatever it may be. That's just my thoughts on it. It's not like, I don't personally want to have anything to say about it. I think we, as a group, should at least pass it through and say, okay, it's a good thing for the community.
Let me think about how to approach this. So, Mr. Hayberger, it would be my understanding that it's well within the manager's authority to decide where a particular piece of art goes based upon a committee or a committee's recommendation. And so I'm leery of establishing a precedent that says everything, every time something gets placed on city property, that we have to have vote, because I know Mr. Poole doesn't want to get involved in micromanaging either, and he's made that very clear, but he's also saying that, you know, when we're doing something larger like this, the commission should have an opportunity on behalf of the public to provide some input. So what I would like to do, perhaps, Mr. Whoopsir, is when those locations are selected, if you could include that in your city manager's report and ask for support from the commission. It seems like it might address everyone's concerns.
It's in the ballpark, the concept of whether or not the manager, at some other time, you can give me the site that gives manager authority to do what he just described. I'm not sure that that's accurate, but it may vary, will be.
Okay, thank you.
Let's start. Thank you.
Other items of, or other questions for the city manager? That's where we are, aren't we? If not, then we'll turn to old business. Any items of old business? Any items of new business? Well, we'll turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any city-related business, please give us your name and address and share your list of thoughts, please.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I'd like to know how far you're into getting a city attorney hired. Is that going to be pretty soon, or?
Mr. Whoopsir, you and I discussed that earlier, and the application or the request for applications is out there. It's open for another couple of weeks, so it's moving along, but it's not yet concluded. It's a little ways away from that.
Okay. I'd also like to know, speaking of art, the fish hook on Meg Street, how much did the city put in for that, the taxpayers? Does anybody know?
I don't immediately know the answer to that. Ms. Byington?
Through you, Mr. President. It was $9,950 from the Neighborhood Initiative Fund.
Okay, and what portion of that was city funding as opposed to a Dorn Foundation funding?
None of it was Dorn Foundation.
Okay, so that was all city funding? Okay, great.
It was $9,959?
$9,950.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Whoopsir, you have something to add?
Through the Commission President, while Director Byington is right, this is funded through city dollars. If you remember, the money that goes towards that neighborhood fund that are public dollars were a match 50% for Dorn Foundation dollars, and so while we're picking on a project-by-project basis, in total, 50% of all the beautification dollars is privately funded.
I see, okay, that was what I had in my mind. Thank you.
So did the Dorn pay for some of this?
Not on that specific one, is what Mr. Whoopsir is saying.
Oh, okay, not on this one. Okay. Did this come out of Issue 8, then? Issue 8 money?
I don't know immediately the answer to that question. Mr. Soloway, do you know the answer to that question?
No, it didn't. Not issue, I believe she said it was the Neighborhood Initiative Fund.
Well, isn't that out of Issue 8?
No.
No?
No, Mr. Whoopsir's also indicating it's not. Mr. Whoopsir, you have something to add?
Through the Commission President, last year, we had an insurance settlement of around $900,000 that the city commission dedicated $600,000 of which to housing for the Neighborhood Initiative, and $300,000 of which is a match for the Dorn $300,000, so it's 1.2 million total. So none of those were Issue 8 dollars. Those were one-time funds that came to the city that leveraged the $350,000 actually from the Dorn Foundation as well, $50,000 of which went to the creation of the plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whoopsir.
Monroe Street, there seems to be a problem with that street falling apart right around the Salem, in front of the Salem there, from the Salem to the west there. And I brought this up to Mr. Klein, and I really didn't get a definite answer, one that could get fixed, you know, or it's on the list or whatever. Something has to be done with that right away. It looked like it was patched, and the patch is sinking in. It's really bad. I would like somebody to take a look at that and see if he can repair that. I don't know if it's a block or two around that area, or how far Monroe, I never really, but it's really bad in front of Salem there where the light is.
Okay. I'm sure Mr. Klein will look at it.
Okay, and City Hall, I kept asking Mr. Whoopsir about, I don't think this is going to get done. He says, oh, yeah, it'll be done at the end of the year. the paper, it's only 50% done. That is pitiful. Eight months, they've been supposed to be working on that, and it's only 50% done. What I'd like to know is, what kind of problems did they have down there that this has got to be delayed for six more months?
Well, I outlined some of the issues earlier, and two of the larger items they pointed out to me was the whole subfloor, entire flooring system for the first floor where the city commission chambers and all the public offices would be, had to be replaced right down to the foundations. That was unanticipated and a very expensive process, and the same with the back wall. In both of those occasions, it was explained to me that they had to redesign it and then wait for approval from the ship of office.
And our city inspectors or these designers that Maru has onboard, architects, they couldn't spot that?
I think what they explained to me was that once they open up an old building like that, you think you know what you're gonna get into, but you never do until you get all the way into it. And they said that they could have just patched it together and cobbled it together, and we would have had a floor that a lot of private developers would have just said, go ahead, we don't want to spend the money on it. But they instead took a different direction and redid the whole thing. So I'm frankly appreciative of the fact that they did that.
Well, I'm with you, Mr. Murray, about fixing it right. But I think they could have spotted that beforehand. That building was in bad shape. So I was just disappointed, and we're giving them about six more months. I think we'll be back here at the table after six more months to give them another six more months, because that's not coming along like it should. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. I'm gonna take you back in time, back to this past July at a Coffee with Commissioners meeting. Part of the discussion at that meeting was the issue at the Washington Street Pier, the United City Hall here, and the issue with high water and boaters coming very, very close to the pier while people are out there trying to fish. We have people, boaters that are coming in at a high rate of speed, throwing four-foot waves up on the pier. At that time, it was also mentioned that there used to be a sign at the end of that pier that said, no wake, and boaters stay 75, 100 feet away from the pier. That sign has since been replaced by a private advertisement for a business that's back in the cove. And I guess what I'm looking for is some kind of an update, whether or not we can take that sign down and replace it with the original sign, or if the city wants to keep, allow the business owner back here to keep the sign up, that's fine. But they had an additional sign down below that reminding boaters it's a no-wake zone, and then to stay a certain amount of feet away from the pier. Because what's happening is, and I've been a boater for 40 years, there's some boaters back in the cove that think there's a channel that runs parallel to that pier that's hogwash. It's no deeper up next to the pier than what it is 200 feet offshore. I do know there's been some incidences of boaters coming so close that it's actually grabbing a hold of fishermen's gear, and they're losing gear, which can be quite expensive. And when they throw four-foot waves up on the pier with the high water, we're seeing additional spalling of the concrete on the pier because of the wave action that's crashing up over the top of the pier. So if someone here today could get with me tomorrow, or maybe comment today on what the plan is for that, that would be excellent. But it's been three months, and we haven't seen any, anything addressed or changed, so.
Well, I will say this. I boat through that area quite frequently, and if anyone is boating through there at anything other than idle, they're just being a pig. And they are being discourteous to the people who are also boating in the area, because it throws a lot of wake off. And if they're obviously fishermen, fisherman, fisherpeople, I'm not sure what the appropriate term is, then that's being discourteous to them. They have a right to be there as well. If the sign came down, or was replaced or whatever, it's not something I happened to notice. I appreciate your bringing it up tonight. I learned about it about two weeks ago. I don't know what the status of that is, but we definitely need a sign there. And I don't know why we couldn't have signs for both, but to your point, yeah, that should be a no-wake area. I don't know that you can stay 75 to 100 feet off, because you run into some shallow areas beyond that, but certainly some distance off, you know.
Well, scouts on, right? I swear, if I had Bible surgery, I'd swear. I used to dock inside the cove, okay? And it's no deeper, seriously, no deeper up close to the dock than what it is 100, 200 feet offshore, once you get out towards the end, okay? Now, coming out of the cove, there is a yellow sign there saying, you know, this is a channel, which there is, because you've got the break while that goes towards Cedar Point, so you have a very narrow opening. So that is a channel right there, but as you get past that sign, again, I swear, it's no deeper up close to that dock than what it is.
I think you're right, yeah.
I swear. So, you know, I understand how government works at a snail's pace, but if we can get something done, I don't care if a guy keeps a sign up down there. The only question I would have with that, though, is, is it allowable for a private business to advertise? Well, first of all, the city knew nothing about it. This guy must have done it in the middle of the night, you know, and nobody saw it. And I didn't see it because it's facing out towards Cedar Point, so you really can't see it unless you kind of peek around it, or if you're out on the boat. But it's fine to keep a sign there, but maybe we ought to be, you know.
Put a second sign up, yeah.
Yeah, top below.
Could someone follow up? I don't know if this falls in, I hate to drop everything here without, Mr. Klein, but could someone follow up with the commission and Mr. Schwanger about that sign?
And again, I've sent emails, and, you know, I got one response back from Mr. Poole about, you know, when is this gonna get taken care of? But I haven't heard anything, anything back since July, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a question, since this is several months old. The advertising sign, does it require planning commission or some kind of permit? I mean, you guys have, where are we on this? That's a better question.
Mr. President, if it's on, is this city property? If it's not supposed to be there, they didn't come through planning commission. It's not permitted, period.
How soon can we do what we need to do to have it removed, then? That's not complicated. Doesn't seem to have solved itself.
Can we talk about Sean Bickley's sign?
I don't know. I just realized it's been since July.
It's Cove sign? It's the Cove carryout sign? Is that the sign? What are we talking about?
Yes, yes, Cove carryout, key west of Sandusky or whatever. And I have nothing against Mr. Bickley.
No, I understand.
This is gonna get back to him somehow.
No, but it's easy to get ahold of him, so. We'll give some direction to this in a couple of days, I promise. Mr. Klein?
That's all right.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn in less than an hour for the first time in, I don't know, eight months?
Second?
Stand adjourned.